Well, good evening. Welcome to the Pullman City Council meeting, the virtual meeting that we have here on Cinco de Mayo Day on May 5th. It's nice to have all of you here and we will now take roles. So Dee Stiles, would you please take role? I think Dee, you need to unmute.
There we go. Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Chapman.
Present.
Councilmember McCall. Councilmember Parks.
Parks is here, but she has her mic muted. Okay.
Councilmember Records.
Records is on, just got here. Okay?
Yes. Councilmember Sorenson.
Here.
Councilmember Weller. Councilmember Wright.
Present.
And we did hear that Eileen was having some technical difficulties, so we should be having her on here. And if she doesn't get on, we'll make sure that we have her excused later on. Under announcements tonight, we have a lot of things going on in terms of different weeks. For example, tomorrow is National Nurses Day. And of course, with this pandemic going around, we certainly, we always appreciate nurses. They're the most, well, I think one of the most important parts of medical care. But tomorrow is National Nurses Day. Yesterday was International Firefighters Day. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. Now, everything that I've heard from parents since they've been trying to fill in as teachers, they really appreciate the teachers. So this is a really a big week for Teacher Appreciation Week. May is National Bike Month. This is also Emergency Medical Services Week, which will take place between May 17th and the 23rd. Also, it is National Public Works Week between May 17th and the 23rd as well. You probably know that Governor Jay Inslee extended the Stay Home and Stay Healthy Order through May 31st. Your Pullman Community Government Education Business Individual Residence Pulling Expertise and Energies to Take Care of Pullman. Together, we're strong. And you can go on our home website, look under COVID-19 for alerts and updates and quick links. I will say that I had a conversation with the governor today. There was about five of us mayors from Eastern Washington. We had our meeting at 1:00. I had a chance to express a couple of concerns. Number one, that I wish that we were in Phase Two right now, and I think that we should be in Phase Two, considering that we have had no COVID-19 cases at our hospital. We've had no deaths in Whitman County. They did allow 10 smaller counties to be a part of the Phase Two already. I know I started my conversation Saturday morning when Senator Schessler sent me a note and said, why wasn't Whitman County in there? And I also had a talk with the representative Joe Schmick on Saturday as well as we were talking about this. Mentioned it to the governor today. He said, well, obviously that we're going by three weeks without a positive case. Well, that means that people, some areas, and I think I've heard it, that some counties haven't been testing, so therefore they can probably make Phase Two. And I know Al Sorenson called me today and had some concerns about this too. So Al, why don't I just turn it over to you too?
Yeah, thanks Glenn. I've been doing a lot of checking into this myself over the weekend. And today I've had conversations with both Joe Schmick and Mark Schessler. A little bit of information on this, you know, the phased approach came out with counties with under 75,000 people and no reported cases in the last 21 days. You could skip Phase One, go to Phase Two with an application. You still have to send it into the governor's office to have them okay it. So there are, there is a map that you can see who the counties are. Whitman County was not included in that. And the reason is, is that our last case in Whitman County was reported on April 22nd. So we're 13 days in, we need eight more for us to be able to reach that level. Is that right Glenn?
That's correct. And Gary Jenkins and I were talking this afternoon because I think you're going to go along with Bill Tillstedt and make an application, right Gary?
Yes, I've communicated with Bill and we're going to put one together to be ready to send.
It'll be ready. Gary, you broke up. It'll be ready when?
We, well, the plan is to go ahead and send it in on the day that we are, would be eligible at the three weeks, which I think is going to be the 12th.
Any chance of sending it in early?
You know, there's not a lot of information available on the website about the exact process, but if we have one ready, there's no reason we couldn't send it earlier.
Al, the gentleman.
If I can jump in again Glenn, if that's okay. One of the things that I know that our legislators are working on, and Glenn, I don't know if this came up in your conversation or not, but one of the, one of the things that they're talking about is trying to get the governor to realign just a little bit to where it's not just newly reported cases, but maybe cases at the hospital or in the hospital or things like that. Because right at the moment, if we have, if we have one new case reported tomorrow, we go back to day one. You know, and honestly, in my opinion, this three-week waiting period of no new cases makes, makes me think that maybe we shouldn't get tested. You know, let's get to the 21 days and go. You know, this right at the moment, the, the opening of Idaho and Governor Little moving forward with some things is even going to cause a greater problem for us than we've had in the past few months with our small businesses. You know, the drainage to Moscow and being a border state has not been that big of a deal right at the moment because they've been shut down also. But now they're opening back up. And that small drain hole is now a giant flood. And I'll tell you what, our businesses in Pullman are not going to survive this if we can't get back going. And it's, it's, you know, my personal opinion that, you know, if there are people out there and, you know, I'm sensitive to people getting the virus and getting sick and, and dying from it or whatever may happen. But in my personal opinion, you know, if you don't feel comfortable going out in public, then stay home. You know, I mean, we're all adults, right? And we are, all have our own decision-making process. And if you don't feel comfortable going out, then stay home. But let our businesses who are being killed by this stuff from the governor, let us get back open in some way. And let's try to move as fast as we can to get that done. So, you know, that's what I've got to say about it. And helping, helping call your legislators, call the governor's office and all that type of thing helps.
I see. Dan Ruckert, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, you know, I think some of the things that Al, that you just said, I, I'm concerned and to me, my personal opinion is that some of the things you just said come across as a bit reckless. And I think, you know, taking a cautiously optimistic approach to this and going with the governor's recommendations for that, you know, no new cases, one case, if we have one new case, that can spread pretty quickly to other people unless we contain that case.
And so we need to continue testing more proactively. We need to increase testing so that we can do contact tracing and isolate those cases. I think it's, it's a bit reckless to say that we, we shouldn't do that. I get where you're coming from. You know, the concern about our businesses being able to survive this is a real concern for everyone. But I don't think we can sacrifice public health to, you know, put businesses forward. So I'm in support of the governor's measure, the phased approach to opening. And I think we need to follow and abide by, you know, what those recommendations are and then follow the lead of the governor on this one. And, 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 and taking that cautiously optimistic approach. I think we are at the place where it would be appropriate, like, like Gary said, to go forward with that application process. But I don't think we should be trying to jumpstart that, put pressure to, to, to get in earlier. Because, you know, one case in an isolated area, if we're not controlling that, can really spread pretty quickly to others. And I'm, that's what I'm concerned about with Idaho opening so early is the, the cross travel that we can't really control across the border. If, if there are continuing infections that just aren't getting tested, you know, that can really blow up pretty quickly and I'm concerned about that. But I'm also, you know, think we need to be looking to our, how are we going to open those businesses in a safe and productive manner so that we don't get a huge explosion of cases coming in another wave?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, Dan, but I'll tell you, you know, you're not a business owner that I know of. And I am, my wife is, many other people in this town are. And it's imperative that they move forward. And most of them had plans before this even became a total shutdown to do the social distancing, to do the cleansing. Phase Two is not complete to let everybody do everything. And if you think for a moment that the transportation between Moscow and Pullman has stopped at all since this first came out, it hasn't. You know, we can't, and like you said, we're not going to be able to stop that because it's just happening, period. And us being on the border is a big deal. And, and I'm totally behind making sure that we can. I want us to be safe also. Put in place the things that are in Phase Two. You know, it has a lot of stuff there. But I just still think that we need to let people make their own choice whether they're going to go out or not.
Al, thank you. And again, today, because we're half Phase One, I was able to go through the RPM Express Car Wash because they finally got to open up. I kept saying all along, there's, and I've sent this to the governor's office, that should have been able to operate for the last couple of weeks because you're alone in your car when you're going through there. You're not actually with others. And today, the car dealers were able to sell to anybody who would like to buy a car as opposed to only those who had a car stolen or damaged or totaled. So at least they got opened up today a little bit too. So with that, we're going to move now to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine in nature. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
Some moved.
Second.
Okay. Dee, did you get that? I just want to make sure. Parks, second. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? With that, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually like to note, I think, I believe, councilmember Paul has joined us. 51334742.
That's Eileen. I've just joined by phone.
Yeah, Eileen is on by phone.
I wanted to make sure Dee had that for the record. So your consent agenda consists of a motion to approve accounts payable checks, number 99830 through 99872 totaling $347,014. And it's $47,014.96. A motion to approve accounts payable checks, number 99873 through 99882 totaling $168,799. Electronic transfers, 601 and 604 totaling $156,420.31. And your deposits, numbered 6199 through 61432 totaling $526,775.85. In addition, you have resolution number R-3420, resolution authorizing acceptance of federal operating grant, number PTD 0195 for Pullman Transit.
There any more, any item the council would like off for discussion? See, none. The consent agenda consists of items one through three. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Dee's got it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, with that, we now move to the regular agenda. First item is a resolution accepting a bid of Magnum Construction for the transit electrical upgrades. And with that, Kevin Gartis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In September of last year, council accepted a WashDOT grant for two new fully electric buses, which are currently on order and due to be delivered in 2021. These will be the first fully electric buses in transit fleet. In order to allow for charging of the electric buses, electrical upgrades are required to the current transit building. This initial electrical upgrade will provide the backbone to serve up to eight fully electric buses. Also included in this upgrade are the charging stations for the first two new electric buses on order. Bids for the project were open on April 14th with six bids received. The low bidder was Magnum Construction LLC at $274,351. The architect's estimate was $95,626. A copy of the bid summary is included in your council packets. Funding for the project will be from the Transit Fund and a WashDOT Green Transportation Capital Grant. This grant has a 25% local match. Grant agreement will be brought to council in the near future. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to Kevin on this? Al?
So Kevin, just real quick, when, when are we getting the buses again, 2021?
That's correct. Yep.
And, and when are they to be in operation?
It depends on exactly when we get them, but I would guess fall semester of 2021.
Okay. And the upgrade with the electrical, how long of a project is that to get done?
It will get done by the end of this year.
That's not what I asked. How long does the project take to get done from day one to finish?
I'm going to have to look it up, but I think based on lead time to some of the electrical equipment, it's like a four or five month process, project. So we would anticipate a notice to proceed sometime probably towards the middle of next month, I would guess, approximately.
Okay. And the funding for this project is already labeled? Or is this money that we're now putting towards it?
No, we've already got it earmarked. It's 25% is coming out of the Transit Fund and 75% would be the WashDOT grant, which will be coming before you here in the near future.
And if we were to not do this today, the grant money, would that still be there later? Or is this something we would lose out on?
I'm unsure of that. I imagine we would have additional time to do it. Because the grant would, isn't, have to be done by a certain date, I don't think, you know. As far as this particular project goes, the contract is before you tonight. So I think there would be a little time to put it off.
Okay. And the, the total amount that the city will be obligated to on this one? Hello?
I'm just getting my calculator out.
Oh, sorry. I'm on a different, I'm looking at the report, so I don't see it.
Oh, it's about 68,000 would be our share.
You cut out?
68,000 is the local match.
Okay. So I just throw this out there like I did last week in regards to the 60,000 we okayed for the design of the roundabout. Not that they're tied together. I'm just talking about spending money right now when we are in a situation where our budget may be severely reduced. And my question is, is this something that we really truly have to do right now? Or is it something that could wait until the 2021 situation? And maybe Mike wants to say something, I don't know.
I've got a couple of comments on that. And then Mike can certainly weigh in. The, on the consent agenda tonight, council approved the CARES grant, and that grant is for transit. So it covers all of the extra overtime that we're spending on COVID. It covers lost revenue. It covers buying disinfectant, all of the cleaning that we're doing. So we're not feeling quite as anxious about transit's budget and revenue at the moment. At least that's my opinion. And we do have the two electric buses coming. And so, I mean, I think we got a pretty good bid, you know. We put it off, we typically pay inflation on bids even, you know, if we did it next year, I would expect to pay five or 10% more unless it's a really bad recession. And then, you know, maybe, maybe prices will stay flat. But those are my thoughts on it.
Mike, what do you think?
Yeah, just to add in, you know, to really clarify this, this part of the CARES Act where the money's coming through the state DOT is a lot less stringent than the others CARES Act things that we're seeing coming through commerce. So Kevin's absolutely right. The fact that we can use those dollars for transit to stabilize their budget quite a bit is a huge grab. So being able to do some of these other projects like this, knowing these buses are coming, it, it's a good time to do that. If this was another department, I'd feel a little bit differently, but DOT has really gone above and beyond just accepting the Department of Treasury from the federal's levels verbiage. And they said, you know, we know our transit units around the state are hurting, so let's see how we can help them out more.
Okay, you just, you understand my caution when it comes to spending any money right now. And let me just throw a worst-case scenario. Students don't come back to Pullman this fall or next spring, or whenever the buses are going to go into effect. Do we need them? I mean, I understand what you guys are saying that, you know, we got a good deal on it and that kind of thing. But, you know, let's think worst case.
I'm, I'm going to just touch on this for, for worst case too, because I forgot to mention this on my last part too. We, we do have some older buses that are starting to cause, get up there in years and cause some expense. And maybe Art can touch on this if he's up to it. I know I'm catching him a little off guard, but some of these repairs on some of these buses and some of these tow bills going up to Spokane. If the students don't come back, we can certainly look at surplusing those older ones out and switching over to the electric ones. Because we are getting those on the state grant now. It's, you can't get the pure fuel ones anymore. And the hybrid grants seem to be going away as well. The grants to buy new buses are pretty much all going towards electric.
Art, did you have anything to add? Or you good?
Art, you're muted.
I thought I'd learned that by the meeting the other day. I guess not, but apologize about that. Now, I just echo what Mike's saying. I agree. We've had quite a few tow bills this spring and, and late winter, taking transit buses up to Spokane. I don't recall exactly what they were, but they were pretty major kind of things that we were dealing with, kind of high-ticket items. And so, you know, our fleet is aging and it's starting to show kind of in the repairs that we're doing and just keep them up and keep them running. So.
Okay. Well, I just want everybody to know my concern about the budget right at the moment. So thank you, everyone.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah. So Mayor, can I just ask then to clarify? So the, the buses we're looking at putting in service, did I hear that right, by fall of 2021? That would be kind of just an estimate?
That's correct.
Okay. The, the other stuff that we're talking about, then the charging terminals. I mean, if, if that takes five or six months, I, maybe that's something that strikes to what Al's talking about. I mean, will that be done a lot before these, these buses come in, into play? Or can that be pushed, you know, back so it's five, six months before those, those buses go into operation? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's a, it's a timing issue. And we've talked about that. We've had this project probably ready to bid for two or three months now. I think our thought was, we get this out there now, this seemed to be a good time to bid it. We were hoping to get good bids based on maybe contractors' concerns about having enough work. And, you know, I think the bid results probably showed that. We could put it off, but I think I'd advise against that for the reason that I think bids will come in higher if we rebid it and we'll be paying more money for it.
Any other comments? With that, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt resolution number R-3020.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Pat Wright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Al, I saw your mouth move out, but you were muted.
I pulled, I pulled an Art Garrel, sorry, Art. You were just.
Dee, did you get the vote? Okay, all right. Matter carries.
Yes, I did get the vote.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're getting things done virtually. I just want to make sure that Dee got it. Otherwise, the next day she'll be saying, Glenn, on this, I might, okay, we got it all taken care of. Item number two now is a resolution authorizing the mayor of Finance Administration Service Director, take all actions necessary, enter in a purchase and sale agreement with Maple Valley Pullman LLC for the acquisition of real property. With that, Clayton Forsman is here to give us a presentation. He's our Deputy Public Works Director. Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. At the southeast corner of Harview Drive and North Fairway, the Pullman Transit Brake Facility can be found. This facility is located on WSU land, and currently we lease the facility, lease the site for the facility from WSU. We were approached by a local developer, Dwayne Brailsford, to see if the facility could be moved to another location that would work for Pullman Transit. And also allowed Dwayne to develop the current site, which is part of a larger site that is planned for both residential and commercial development. Staff worked with Dwayne to find a suitable location for the transit, transit brake facility. And we found a location that would work for us about a half mile north of the current location on Westwood Drive. Site plan was developed and approved for the, the new site, and the property was short-platted.
All right, all right, my bad. All right, sorry. Thank you. Oh my God, you're amazing. Thank you.
Nathan, you, you can be heard throughout the entire meeting. So you might want to mute at this point. Thank you.
For muting, Nathan.
Let me pick back up here. So the new site was, a site plan was prepared and developed, and Dwayne also moved forward with a short plat to create a parcel for the, the new site. In order to convey the property to the city, a purchase and sell agreement has been prepared and is brought to council tonight for approval and authorization. The agreement specifies gifting of the property to the city upon satisfaction of the contingencies set forth in Section 4 of the agreement. This specifies that the building will be relocated to the new site, and all the improvements necessary will be completed at no, at no cost to the city. Once that's completed, the property would be transferred to the city by statutory warranty deed within six months or no later than April 1st of next year. And with that, I would be glad to take any questions.
Questions or comments? Al, I see your hand up.
Yep. Thanks, Clayton. Just a couple of questions. So we are currently leasing that corner from WSU, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so with the move here, the city would then own the property and there would be no lease payments or anything else. We'd own it free and clear. We wouldn't owe Dwayne any money or anything like that?
That's correct. It's, it's a generous offer from Dwayne.
Okay. And can you, there, there was no map in the stuff today. So where exactly is this at? Can you help me with where this new spot's going to be?
Sure. So I don't know if you can pull up the purchase and sell agreement. If not, I can explain it. I can explain it, but in the purchase and sell agreement, there is an exhibit, it's Exhibit B. And the first page of Exhibit B, or the second page of Exhibit B, it's a sheet labeled C0. There's a vicinity map, and it shows the project location. It's kind of hard to see, but it's, you would go up Northwood, and Northwood becomes Westwood. And as Westwood turns from north to west, on that corner, on the inside corner, would be the new, the new site that we're talking about.
So is this, is this clear up on the top? And forgive me for not telling you exactly, is this, would this then if I walked across the street, be looking down on the new housing development at the end of the port there?
No, this would be further east.
Further east.
So you would, you would be on Merman, you would, you would take a right, or you would turn east on Westwood. You'd go by Birch Hills 1 and Birch Hills 2. And, and it's where the road makes a 90 to the, to the south, and you're traveling southbound again. So it's.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I, I guess I didn't scroll down far enough to get to that Exhibit B. I, I do have another. I, I do have another question though in regards to the current corner where we're at. Uh, we just approved, uh, the design work for a new roundabout at that intersection right there. Uh, and I know that that corner, are we gonna have to take any of that corner? And I don't know if you or Kevin want to respond to this, but are we gonna have to expand that corner? And can we make sure that Dwayne's not building, uh, clear down to what we might have to take for that roundabout?
Dwayne, Dwayne, uh, knows about our intentions with that, uh, intersection and, and our, uh, desire to put a roundabout in. Uh, at least to look at that and see how it would fit. So his development is actually going to, um, leave some open space on the corner. And as we refine our work with the other agreement that was brought forward last week. Um, we'll mesh the two and make sure that, that there is space reserved, so we've already.
Okay, I do, I would, I would just want to make sure that whatever he applies for to do on that corner, we leave enough room for anything we're thinking about doing at that intersection. Cause as soon as he's got stuff going in there, then it becomes a problem.
Agreed.
And, and I don't know, I mean, I, I trust Dwayne, but you know, having things in writing versus having things agreed upon is two different things.
Sure.
Any other comments? See none, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Been seconded, Laura, do you want to read the resolution, please?
Resolution number R dash thirty-one dash twenty, a resolution authorizing the mayor and finance and administrative services director to take all actions necessary to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Maple Valley Pullman LLC for the acquisition of certain real property and improvements to be used for the relocation of the Pullman Transit Brake Facility and other matters related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we now move to resolution number three, this is the third item on the agenda tonight. It's a resolution to accept the bid of Northwest Fence Company for city playfields upgrades and authorizing execution delivery of the contract. Kevin Gartis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The Pullman voters approved Prop two in February of 2018. This bond measure included a project at the city playfields. The base bid includes new dugouts at Wiley Bowman and Thetuna Fields, new backstops and scores enclosures. And fencing from the backstops out to the edge of the infield on the two softball fields, which is also the end of the existing eight foot high fencing. On the Little League field, the base bid fencing includes the backstop out to the end of the existing fencing of earth and third base lines. Additional unit pricing was provided by the bidders to possibly add additional fencing at whatever quantity this city decide based on the bid result and available funding. The bid results were favorable, however, on some of the other Prop two bond projects, costs have gone over a little bit. Um, so this project allows us to recoup some budget. Recreation supervisor Damon, um, is evaluating and prioritizing additional fencing, which will then be discussed with Mike Urban to decide what, if any, additional fencing the city will request. Bits for the project were open on April twenty eighth with three bids received. The low bidder was Northwest Fence Company Inc. at two hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents for the base bid. The architect's estimate was one hundred and ninety-one thousand. A copy of the bid summary is included in your council packets. Funding for this project will be from the twenty eighteen bond fund. Construction was originally slated to start no earlier than August third. However, the schedule was determined prior to some of the, uh, COVID nineteen impacts and developments. So it's possible construction could start sooner, um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Kevin, comments? Al again.
Yeah, just real quick, I, I think, uh, that's great if we can, uh, if we can get him in there sooner, if they want to, awesome. You know, get them done before fall. I don't think, Kurt, are we having, we're not having softball league this summer, or are we?
Adults is still undetermined, we may try to have a short men's season, um, that would basically go late June or, and then into July. Um, but that's yet to be determined, we're got feelers out to some of the adult, uh, teams, just to see if they'd be interested. And really that's, you know, almost two months later than we'd normally start and generally by, you know, by the time you get after fourth of July, some of those teams are ready to be done already. So I'm not sure that, you know, how much interest we would have. Um, we do run our adult league with Moscow Parks and Recreation. Um, so we do have the ability, you know, if we wanted to start a little bit earlier, potentially transfer some games over to Moscow that normally would be played here.
Cause when the fences are being done, we're out of commission on the ball fields, is that right? Or one at a time, or how's that gonna work?
Yeah, um, uh, last night Pullman Youth Baseball at their board meeting, they elected to cancel their season. Um, so it could be something where, you know, a lot of times if we're, to work with the contractor, they may be able to start down on the Little League field. Um, and if we don't have a lot of participation, we may only be using one field anyways. So there's potentially the, the opportunity for, for them to be working on two different fields.
Okay, thank you.
Brandon, I saw that you had a comment.
Yeah, hi Kurt, this will not be the first time we've, we've talked about this. Um, so, uh, I didn't see any of the latest, uh, drawings or renderings of, of this, but I did notice that it had dugouts on here. So did we, did we finally end up settling on a, a style of dugout? And, um, I guess that's the first, first thing. And then the second thing, as, as we previously discussed, uh, you know, Moscow at their new complex, the new complex. Um, there are safety concerns, especially nowadays with people not being able to see into the dugout, what's going on in the dugout. And, and I know that was something that we had talked about, um, you know, just for, for everybody's safety, coaches, uh, parents, you know, and, and especially more than anything, the youth, um, having some vigilance there. Um, so maybe you could touch upon the, the dugouts.
Yeah, and Kevin, you might jump into, there was, I know one of the, uh, contractors was looking at kind of a, a prefab dugout from a company. Um, but if I do recall, basically it's just your support post and a roof. Um, and keeping the back and the sides open so you can see through those.
That, that's correct, the, the design is, has fenced, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, Eileen.
Um, yeah, and thanks for taking the time this afternoon, Kurt, and I had a very nice conversation this afternoon about this. And the one thing I guess I did not ask him was, and I know this came up before, that all of these facilities, the dugouts and whatever all, going to go along with them, these are all ADA compliant, is that correct?
Yeah, you know, one of the thing, our current, um, uh, score tables, you know, they've got, you gotta climb like three or four steps ladder basically to get up. Uh, into that, and that part of the design was that we were gonna just be right at ground level. Um, for score, for score tables, um, so yes, everything would be ADA compliant.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Uh, Dan Records.
Yeah, uh, Eileen took one of my questions, but, uh, I, I just, you know, looking at the bid sheets, I know this comes up, uh, in sometimes with bidding, but was there any indication of why there was such a disparity? I mean, like one of the bids came in fifty percent higher than, than the, the low bid.
Um, that, you'd think that would be surprising, but it's pretty common actually. Especially the more bids you have, um, this, in this case we only had three, but that, that high bid, I think, I looked on the, um, plan service that we use up in Spokane to see when they actually pulled the plans. And it was just a day or two before the bid, so I think they came to it late, they just threw a number at it and.
Okay, Danny, anything further?
No, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, yeah.
Brandon, I just have another question, Kurt. Um, and I, and I don't know where we ended on this, so the, um, the fencing, is this just gonna be like the hurricane fencing? Um, in, any consideration again for the, the top of the fencing, uh, which is, you know, usually in, in yellow. I know we've, we've had issues with, um, a lot of like hornets and, and things like that, wasps. Uh, hopefully not the murder hornet or whatever they call it, uh, in there. Um, and, and anything on, uh, some of the other fencing that had been discussed previously? Does this include like raising some of the fence on, on the tuna? Um, you know, widening that out further toward, you know, center field, keeping the, the trail safe, uh, where people might hit the, the baseballs out, things like that. Uh, how extensive is, is what's gonna fall under this bid?
Um, Kevin, back me up here, I think, you know, a lot of the fencing, I think the backstop fencing, we looked at, I think would be a higher gauge. Um, than maybe your typical, um, standard, you know, chain link fence. And then I think down the, down the wings and the outfield fencing was gonna be basically standard. Um, you talked about that top yellow rail, part of this project, um, which would not be part of this bid, is that we would look at replacing that on our own, through our own budget, uh, down the road. I think that current yellow rail top is probably fifteen years old, so it's definitely need to be replaced. You mentioned Thetuna, um, we're looking, right now there's, uh, that netting that is out there that runs from the right field out to about, uh, not quite center, whatever. Uh, we are looking at going with a twenty quick bits to replace that netting. Um, so it's a more permanent, and we're not, you know, counting on staff to take up, take down and the wear and tear on that. I know with the architect, we did look at on Thetuna pulling that fence in to kind of make it more uniform around. Uh, one of the things that we gotta kind of consider is we use that outfield area, uh, for kindergarten or first grade. Um, so we gotta make sure that we can fit those fields in there and still leave enough space around there.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this resolution?
Yeah, move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Move to second, Laura, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution of R dash thirty-two dash twenty, a resolution accepting the bid of Northwest Fence Company Incorporated for city playfields upgrades and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that, we now move to item number four on your agenda. This is one that's dealing with, uh, actions necessary to enter purchase sale agreement with Justin Rogers for the sale of certain real estate property. I will mention that, uh, Allison Munch Rotolo did go through the process and asked to speak on this issue. So we're gonna have our discussion first, before you take a vote, we'll hear from Allison for a three minute, uh, comment on this. And she did send a letter off this afternoon, I think some of you may have received it, I hope, I think all of you did. So with that, uh, Clayton?
Mayor. Um, so at the southeast corner of B Street and Harvey, the city owns property that extends beyond the typical space reserved for a street right of way, and that portion is surplus to the needs of the city. Justin Rogers owns the land adjacent, uh, the, the lot adjacent to the south. And he approached this, he approached the city about, um, purchasing this portion of the city property so that he could renovate the existing building and add an additional dwelling unit. An exhibit is included in tonight's packet to show this area, along with a preliminary concept of the site development. At a December tenth meeting last year, council agreed to have staff move forward with this potential sale of city property to Justin Rogers. Staff worked with Justin to prepare a purchase and sell agreement, which is being brought to council tonight for approval and execution. The agreement approves the city to sell property to Justin at a purchase price that reflects the appraised value of the property. The agreement also specifies that the buyer, Justin Rogers, has six months to determine the property is suitable for set acquisition and use. This will consist of the development and submittal of a site plan for the proposed development that complies with city codes and standards, along with a subsequent boundary line adjustment to create the portion of land to be sold. Closing of the sale shall be completed by September thirtieth of next year and all improvements are to be completed within two years. Uh, Glenn mentioned that, uh, late today, a letter was submitted, um, from the College Hill Association. Hopefully that was distributed to each of you. The letter references the December tenth city council discussion, at which time a similar letter also from the College Hill Association was presented. The thing behind both letters is in regards to preserving open space. I would like to mention that Justin Rogers did mention in his memo to council, also, also presented at that same meeting, that most of the proposed land acquired would be used for setback purposes and remain a green area. And if that, I would, you gotta take any questions when the time's up.
Okay, questions of Clayton on this? From the console? Okay, Brent?
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't under, I don't know if this is prudent or not. Um, we, we did receive the letter, at least I did, um, from the College Hill Association. Uh, received it at six thirty-eight, um, today, six thirty-eight PM. Um, I, I would, I'd like to be able to have a little time to digest the letter and, and seriously consider the, the concerns and the things that they have, um, you know, proposed through this letter. I, I don't know if it would be prudent, but I would, I would prefer to, um, table this for, you know, just until the next council meeting to have time to, to look over this.
And, and I have a question for, uh, for Laura.
Okay, we got Eileen and then we'll have, uh, we'll have, uh, Al, okay, Eileen?
Um, I think when we reviewed this before, I think I recused myself because I own property within the specified distance. Would that affect my vote at this point?
It, it would not, you did recuse yourself, but, um, I think that was a matter of what you felt comfortable with, it wasn't legally required.
Okay, so that would not factor in with, 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 with what may be before us this evening?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other, uh, council members?
Yeah, my question, I did not receive the email, so I don't even know what the letter even said, so.
It was pretty close to the one that you saw earlier, but we will have Allison on too before any kind of vote.
Okay.
Any other comments? Uh, Dan Records?
Um, just, is there, is there any exigency to, to making a decision tonight on this? Is there, is there any kind of deadlines coming up that we need to be considering?
Um, th- this is Clayton, um, you know, we're just trying to get to you when it was ready. And, um, I think if we needed to delay it, I think that we could do that and bring it to you, um, at another meeting, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Believe we are scheduled for, uh, a meeting next week on the twelfth.
Yeah, that, that would be fine with me.
And, and I would be fine here, still hearing Allison tonight, but, um, that would be just my preferences. If we could put it on the twelfth, just so we could give full respect to the, to the letter, it's, I mean, it's four pages, so, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, go to Ann Parks.
I agree, if we do tape, or if we do move this forward, I would still like to hear from Allison since we have her here.
Okay, so if there's no other comments from console, uh, let us go to, and here's where IT will come in. Uh, bring in Allison Munch Rotolo. And, uh, Allison, you have three minutes on your presentation.
All right, we're unmuted, so Allison, whenever you're ready. Okay, uh, well, thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, it will take three minutes, I'm basically just, uh, appearing in support of the letter. Um, I'm sorry that it didn't get to you all. No timing on the agenda, and we read about it in Monday's paper, and, um, we did submit it around noon today. Um, the letter is similar in content to the one that was included in the December package. Um, although we included, um, a little bit more story and information about what, how we like uh, small public spaces like this, and we showed an illustration of our College Hill neighborhood sign site, which is actually a smaller area and the potential of something like that to be a source of neighborhood pride. Um, so we do see a lot of, uh, potential in these small publicly owned spaces and see it as consistent with all of our city planning documents maintained. consistent with all of our city planning documents, maintain publicly owned spaces, um, because that's just what, that's what we do. We're always looking for um, ways to acquire green and open spaces. Here's one um, that the city already has. So uh, we would just urge not selling of the city's property at this point. Um, and that's really about it. Uh, the letter is signed not just by myself, but by all members of the College Hill Association Board of Directors. And then the fourth page is just simply a list of the planning. So I'm just here in support of that letter and I had to get answered any questions.
Any questions of Alison? Okay, Alison, thank you very much for your time. And uh, I've heard comments about moving this to the twelfth. Is that the interest of the council to move it to the next week's meeting? And I'm seeing nods. Uh, we don't, I don't think we need a vote on it. We're just gonna move it. Uh, Laura, you're the, you're the ultimate expert.
For to the next meeting.
And and part of that was distorted, Laura. I didn't quite, I I don't know if that was distorted for the rest of you, but I I.
Shaking her head. Is that better? You could either have a motion to defer it to the uh, meeting or choice or it was or chair can um can pull it from the agenda based on their their consensus.
So if you're all right with that, we'll just pull it from the agenda and uh, have it on the uh, council agenda for next week. Okay? Thank you very much. Yeah, move to item number five. This is a motion to approve uh, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response to safer grant. Ray Lammerow is our uh, training officer, Deputy Chief. And Ray, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With some uh, guidance from Adam and Mike Urban as we've been getting through these uh, tough budget times, uh, we do have the opportunity to possibly uh, put in for a safer grant. Uh, and the purpose of this grant would be to retain any firefighters that we might um, have to have a reduction in force uh, for the fire department. So this would not be for new positions. This would be to retain any positions that might be reduced uh, because of any budget issues. The total grant amount is one million, one forty-five, nine fifty-seven. Uh, and the way this particular grant works through FEMA is it's a three-year grant. Uh, FEMA picks up seventy-five percent of the uh, wages and benefits cost for the employees uh, through years one and two. And then they drop down to thirty-five percent on the third year. So the first two years of the grant, the city would be uh, responsible for twenty-five percent wages and benefits. And then the third year, uh, sixty-five percent. Uh, as you can see in your, in your agenda there, uh, how all those numbers work out. Uh, May fifteenth is the deadline for uh, submittal. Uh, so the fire department would be requesting uh, a motion tonight to pursue that if the council so chooses.
Ray, can I just ask one quick question? It has firefighter, one, two, and three. Does this mean that we can also have paramedics?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it was that that was just the general term that I used for the charts.
Okay, Al, you had a question?
Yeah, question of Mike, I think, right now. Um, so at the very end of the chart there, Ray, it talks about if we still have to lay firefighters off or or furlough them, um, we would have to pay back any of this money uh, that we'd spent and then forfeit anything else. Uh, Mike? I understand, but uh, uh, is that, of course, it's a possibility, but uh, what are, what are our odds of that?
I would think that this safer grant certainly reduces those odds drastically when you look at having to pay back, you know, sixty-five, seventy-five percent in certain years versus just finding twenty-five, thirty-five percent to keep them going. That's fine. The bigger concern, it it's a good bridge I, for what I believe the economy will turn around and look like. Uh, certainly, this doesn't look like the recession of two thousand eight, nine. And even if it were, we we did come back from that fairly regularly. Uh, this would be like one virus after another after another situation. And I just, I don't want to think about things like that. I I I work harder to find the extra dollars to keep them on through absolutely at least the third year, knowing that those dollars buoyed us in the first part of the grant.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay, Dan?
Ray or Mike, um, I just, I just wanna kind of talk this out so I make sure I understand it um, a little better. So um, this is, you know, kind of like what Mike said, bridge funding. So this would be helping us uh, sus- uh, maintain our budget and and keep these firefighters on so we could have additional funding to not make that decision earlier. Whereas if we don't accept this, we might be looking at that situation much sooner because we're not getting in these additional dollars. But it puts kind of a pressure point on us if we accept this money and we're getting that money over the next three years to really hold on to those firefighters or else we're gonna have to pay the money back. So it's kind of giving us this carrot, but then having that be a, we we better not walk it back after, after we get into it or otherwise it's gonna cost us a lot more money and cause more damage. Is that kind of what, what the outlook is here?
Like that went to Mike Urban.
I was gonna defer to Ray to start.
Yeah, I I can start. Um, so uh, council records, um, you you're on the right track, uh, working with Adam and Mike. Uh, fire, as I'm sure uh, all the departments have, we've been able to find the ten percent for Mike's worst case scenario at this point, uh, to not have to worry about uh, laying firefighters off at this point. Uh, this, this is kind of that contingency plan, just in case things really get bad, uh, that we would still be able to keep staff on at a reduced cost to the city. Uh, if for whatever reason, the city, uh, we get awarded this grant.
You're breaking up, Ray.
I'm I'm hoping Ray's not back in his office because that's where we've had him break up before. Uh, anybody hurt him?
I think what he was talking about was the the part where we we wouldn't get awarded the grant until September. And then so if if we have like that lead time, we could make a decision at that point to not accept the grant. So we'll have a better financial outlook at that point. We can make that decision.
That's, yeah, that's correct. And um, trying to allude a little bit to what Ray was talking about, we did ask the departments to go in and look for their cuts. The worst case scenario is a little higher. We just found the rest of the percentages in other places. So I just wanna make sure that that wasn't some misinformation out there. But yeah, first is applying for it, second is getting it, and third is deciding if we even want it. So we're gonna get another bite at this apple later. And by then, I think our financial situation will be a lot clearer.
And Adam, I saw you unmuted. Any comments that you wanted to make?
No, I was just, uh, depending on the quality of sound, I was just gonna echo what what Mike had said is that um, there's the option to not accept it and it's much later on in the year. So for for now, the authorization is merely to uh, be able to both apply for the funds.
I just want to commend all three of you and four of you and five of you, just for coming up with some options that uh, we can actually consider. That that's to make sure we can keep staff and that's, that's wonderful that you could at least have this option. We'll find out if we get it. I'm sure Safer has always been to try and acquire new firefighters to build up staff. But I don't know, I I don't know what our odds are. Ray, you've been back there and you've looked at grants and you've actually been on the referee committees on those, so you you would know.
Um, you know, I've I've had some pretty good luck with Safer. Uh, my previous department, uh, we were able to get almost a two million dollar grant for uh, for staffing. Uh, I think we got a pretty good shot. Uh, there, especially in the economic times that we have right now. Uh, Safer's gonna be looking at retention versus adding. So I I do think we got a pretty good shot at getting it.
Well, that's encouraging. Uh, any other comments or discussion? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to approve going forward with the grant.
And second for man. The motion is basically to approve the purchase, uh, pursuance of the two thousand nineteen staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed? With that, we now move to item number six. It's a motion to authorize Public Works Director to execute a contract between the city and S W S Equipment. With that, Art Garrel.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and uh, good evening, City Council. I come before you this evening asking for your approval to authorize the Public Works Director to um, to grant the authority to the Public Works Director to execute a contract between the city and S W S Equipment Incorporated Spokane Valley, Washington for the, for the procurement of a truck mounted sewer router or what I'll refer to as a router from here on out. Just a little bit more about information about what a router is, because I I'm not sure that everybody knows. Let's all give a brief description to kind of what it does and the importance of it. The equipment, a router is a mechanical machine that basically provides three service things for us. One, it clears roots and other um, obstructions from sewer pipes. Two, it um, is capable of climbing higher extreme grades. So if we have a plug or it's something on a steeper grade that we can't pull with the jet truck, it's able to make the grade. And it's useful, clean, useful for cleaning and temp- um, when the temperature's low, like during the winter, because there's no water involved in the rotting um, process. And so you don't have to worry about the backer truck freezing up or anything like that. The ro- the router is basically our most valuable method for removing roots, uh, making it essential to our mission of preventing sewage backups. A rotting program div- divides the known root problems lines into one of five time-based preventive maintenance schedules. And they, they range, first one's three months, four months, six months, nine months and twelve months. And so there's a few of those that happen multiple times a year. For example, um, lines that are on the three-month schedule would be done four times a year. Six-month schedule be done twice a year. When work orders are issued when rotting is due and a team of two peoples assigned to complete the work, a majority of the lines on the schedule, uh, on the skid, are on the schedule due to past root problems uh, that have resulted in backups. And many of them are, um, have been the subject of insurance claims over the years. Funding for the the replacement of the the nineteen ninety-six sewer equipment company router was approved in the night, in the two thousand nineteen budget, and that was ninety thousand dollars. However, the quotes um, exceeded the budget amount by more than fifty thousand dollars. And I decided at that time to delay the purchase until this year in just, in anticipation of this occurring additional funds. On set, on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, City Council amended the E R D capital budget for two thousand twenty, including the additional needed funds. I I recognize that we are in uncertain financial times. However, this is an essential piece of equipment needed to maintain and protect our system and protect homeowners and businesses from having to experience a sewer backup firsthand. I hope all you know me well enough to know that I would not bring this proposal to you unless it were necessary for me to do that, to do so. So why is this an essential purchase? Um, the existing router is past its useful, useful life. This patent, past winter, it broke down and it took two and a half months to get it back into service. It is operational at this time, but it's hard to say for how long. The lead time for delivery of the new unit is ten months to a year. And so this will more like, this will kind of go into twenty twenty-one. I don't think that we'll see this machine delivered for twenty, before the end of twenty twenty. And and um, and I'm confident that we can keep the existing unit operational until that time. We've also looked at some other options we might have and in our recent mutual aid agreement with Moscow might provide some remedies for that too, if we got into real pinch for one. We also have an agreement with the Department of Ecology to clean all the sewer lines on a thirty-two month schedule. And while out the router, this this achieving this could be problematic. And I might add that thirty-two month schedule ends in September of twenty twenty-one. So if we were to put this procurement off with a ten-month lead time, we wouldn't even get the router until after that has passed. So with that, I guess I'll take any questions you have.
Okay, any que- and the questions, and I think every one of us who've been on console or mayor have had contact with uh, some of our residents who had backup sewer and and had to help, help them the way through the insurance claim. And Dee's always had to have, how to file those insurance claims. So you understand the importance of that. Dan, we'll go to you first.
Yeah, I I just wanted to kind of walk through a scenario with you. Uh, if if we didn't have, like if if the current router broke down, even if, you know, we go forward this, you know, purchase, uh, and there's, there's that ten-month delay. You said Moscow has some options. They could potentially assist us. But if if you had a bad root blockage, what would be the alternative to remove that? Would you have to dig, like physically dig the pipe out and and physically remove it?
Uh, no, we we also have a jet router that we use. It's just not as effective of, you know, cutting the roots out and getting them out of there, which is kind of the case with most of our problem areas. Um, so we would have some options to try before we actually recently, you know, went to digging up a street or something like that.
Other questions?
No, uh, Mayor, I just wanted to.
Okay, Brandon, and then we'll go to Al, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I want to echo what you said. Um, I've heard from so many residents, I mean, in my neighborhood uh, all around the streets, people that have had this problem and it drastically, um, you know, changes the way the way sometimes they even feel about the city. Um, and and our our M and O guy, I mean, they're trying to do everything they can to keep these, these these sewers cleaned and and uh, unobstructed. And and this is one of those pieces of equipment that I I just don't think we can keep, you know, putting off. Uh, we need to give them the tools that that are required to be able to um, to take care of these issues. And so so folks' lives and sometimes things that they cannot get back that are ruined. Uh, so those, those kind of things don't happen.
Okay, Al?
Yeah, okay, um, Art, uh, I think this is a, is something that we do need to get. I deal with some of those insurance claims, as I'm sure Ann does also. Uh, but Art, I've got a couple of questions for you in regards to uh, our our current sewer maintenance program and you know, what are, what are we doing to like minimize, you know, sewer line breaks and, you know, have we changed anything or how, what's our process and procedure? I know in your report, it talks that you have to clean every sewer line out every thirty-two months at least and that kind of thing. But I mean, is this something that will allow us to step things up? You know, I mean, talk to me about our maintenance program a little bit.
Well, uh, right now, we're, like I, like I mentioned, we're, um, we have an agreement with the ecology to clean the schedule, um, clean the sewers on a thirty-two month schedule, but also as part of that agreement, we've also agreed to look at our operations and to make, you know, see if they're adequate for what we're doing. You know, um, the last two or three years, um, you guys see the insurance claims. We've had a lot of what's called S S Os. And that kind of brought us to the forefront of the attention of ecology. And so we've been working with them to, to kind of, to 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 lessen that. And we have a um, a consultant who's helping us kind of look at our operations. He's making recommendations on what we should do. Um, in the past, you know, the the O and M part of our sewer comp plan has been, you know, very very brief. It doesn't give a lot of detail. In fact, the most detail it gave was pretty much that we tried to clean on an eighteen-month schedule. And with the amount of um, staff that we have, that's just not possible. We have to be smarter about that. So we have to, we have to look at some alternatives, you know, maybe we go to T T, using CCTV a lot more and and looking at the lines and make, and and then only jet rotting are the ones that we really need to, you know, the things that, the type, things that take time to do, um, having a crew come back. So we're, we're evaluating all that right now. And it definitely needs work and we need to do, you know, but I have a great staff. We're all committed to, 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 to making this better and to doing the best job we can do for the citizens of Pullman. And I'm confident, um, with the guys I have working for me, they'll figure it out. They're just that type of group, so.
Might be an issue at some, I was going to finish, if that's good. Just wanted to say, uh, you know, I, I understand staffing might be an issue. I know we're not talking about employees right at the moment, but I think that could be something that we look at in the future to make sure that that stuff's, you know, we got to stay on top of this stuff. Uh, and if somewhere down the road, we have to have more employees and I see Kevin's got his hand up, so he must have something about that.
Yeah. Kevin?
You set me up really well, Al. So we just wrapped up, uh, some strategic planning work, both on the community development department side, but also looking at M and O. And one of the things we looked at at M and O is the number of FTEs that we need to maintain the sewer lines and the water lines and the streets and traffic lights. So it's a good point and it's something that you'll probably see in the coming months.
Thank you.
Do any others comments? Okay, if not, uh, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. Is the motion to authorize the public works director to execute a contract between the city and SWS equipment for the procurement of a truck mounted sewer router. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And perhaps offline, we can find out from Art what SSO really stands for later on. With that, uh, we have no reports from any of the citizens, aside from Allison, who wanted to have a comment on new business. Is there any new business to come before the council from council members? Al?
I just have a quick comment. Uh, I'm sure that y'all have noticed my flag up behind me today. And I just wanted to say, remember, we are the land of the free and the home of the brave.
All right, Dan Records, I saw a comment from you.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of touch on some of the comments I made last week. I, I, I did, uh, develop, kind of put together a, a survey that, that could be utilized. And, and I just wanted to check in with the rest of council if that's something that the, they, they are looking favorably on the city, putting out there to, to the residents to, you know, the, the idea being, uh, getting feedback from residents that can be passed along to businesses on, as the governor or, or starts to relax things or as we go forward with, uh, the Witten County Commissioners, uh, applying for that early relaxation of some of the, you know, jumping to phase two. What would, what would our residents like to see businesses doing in terms of, uh, you know, safety measures or precautions or things as, as we reopen? And, and so I put together a survey, I, I circulated it to city staff, um, and connected with the Chamber of Commerce. And Chamber of Commerce is, uh, willing to step in and, and provide some assistance on the logistics, on the, you know, distribution and, and kind of analysis afterwards. So it, I just wanted to check in with folks if that's something that, that we think is, is something that the city should be doing at this point.
Comments?
I'll jump back in. That's okay. Yeah, I'd like to see what you've put together, Dan. I think this is something that, um, we really, uh, need to think about is how are we going to proceed as a city when things start to move forward? Um, and, and we really kind of need to be prepared for this. So, uh, we, we need to be thinking about what we can do to help them, how we can help them i- in regards to the businesses, I mean, residents also. Uh, so I'd be more than happy to, to see the information you've put together. But I do think as a city, we need to really kind of start planning, uh, some stuff.
Brandon, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, no, Dan, I, I appreciate that. I applaud your, your efforts in, in this regard. And, and I do want to see what, what residents think specifically, because sometimes it's, uh, you know, we, we all talk to residents quite a bit. But when you, when you, we can cast a wide net and get more of this, uh, quantitative data. You know, sometimes it, it might not be what we think it, it is. And, and sometimes it may be something very simple that is causing folks to not want to, um, to go out and, and give business. So, uh, you know, if we could, um, take that and responsibly, um, open businesses and still keep public health at the forefront. I, I don't see any reason why we can't do both. And, and so I, I, I think we just need to arm ourselves with that kind of information. So I applaud you for doing that. I, I say whatever avenues we need to use to get good, solid information, uh, we should do that.
Ann Parks?
Thank you. Uh, Dan, I love the idea and I think it's really important to involve our citizens right now. And with the chambers cooperation and ability for their outreach, to use their, their outreach capabilities, I think it's a very nice idea. And people will, yeah, I think it's good that we'll get feedback from our residents. Thank you.
Any other comments? Al, again?
Real quick, I think, uh, you know, we, we for sure want to get our economic development person involved with this as much as possible.
Yeah, Jen already provided a lot of really great feedback on the, on the preview of the survey. Um, and I've already incorporated her changes. So it's, Adam, is that something that, that I can send out to the rest of the council? Or is that something you want to send out to the rest of the council?
Go ahead, you've, you've put it together this far, by all means.
Thank you. I'll, I'll get that to everybody so you can provide some feedback before we move forward with it.
You know, one of the things that we hear from our residents is they want to make sure that everything at restaurants, for example, is clean. And, and they want to make sure things are protected too. I was on the line with the Washington Economic Recovery Coalition, basically, it's a lot of Seattle people. But we, I was talking to the Washington Hospitality Association Chief, who happens to be a COOG. And I mentioned, you know, some of the things that we're hearing from our residents is we want to know what's different at that restaurant today than it was before this happened. What are you doing now to make sure things are clean? How are you separating tables? What are you doing in the back room? We want to know those things before we go out and we feel safe. And, uh, this sort of, it came as a sort of a surprise to them a little bit. And then all the other ones, all the other members were all saying the same thing, that, yeah, we want to know what's different now. And I think that questionnaire, Dan, is, is perfect, because I think that's what the public wants to express right now. Is we'd like to see some things that are a little different than maybe before. Any other comments?
No, I mean, uh, yeah, so, so some of these, right, uh, obviously, we don't have to, to follow up on every single suggestion people have. That would probably not be wise, but, um, I like some of the bold ideas that, that folks have. And, and I'm, I am not saying that this is, uh, absolutely what we do. But, uh, I saw somebody today on Twitter that said, what if we shut down, uh, Main Street initially from Spring Street to Grand and had the whole street closed for restaurants to spread out, you know, have outdoor seating, uh, have plenty of space in between them and, you know, have two-way on, on Paradise. So again, um, not saying that that is, I, I like the idea, not saying we do something like that, uh, but, but it is bold. And I think some residents will have really good suggestions. Um, and we, we just, we don't have the market, market cornered on all intelligence. So we've got so many smart people out there. I, I think, I think some of these will, will come through with some, some just amazing suggestions for how we can help people feel safe and spread out and, and what have you, but, but still help businesses.
Pat, did I see that you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Glenn. So number one, I would like to echo what Ann just referenced. And I think the Chamber of Commerce is an excellent partner for us in terms of being a liaison with the business community, because they really are in touch. And right now, it doesn't matter whether you are a member of the chamber, they are still a resource, open and available to everyone. And I agree with Brandon, I think now more than ever, it's a time to be thinking outside the box and looking at whatever inventive and innovative kinds of things we can, uh, employ and initiate, to just kind of keep things, keep things safe, make people feel safe and just kind of get back on the right track here. Thank you.
One of the things we're hearing, not only from our community, but from other communities, is where a lot of restaurants, when as soon as they get back at it, is to expand the sidewalk area. Maybe there's a case where we take the parking spaces away and use that as expanded, you know, area where the people could eat. But I know we've had some requests around here too, for the same thing about expanding the sidewalk area for restaurants. And, and that's something that we're working our way through too. So again, uh, Dan, I think you heard a lot of, uh, people saying, yeah, go ahead and send out the, the message. Is there any other, just to come before, yeah, Al?
I, I just got a, a quick question for, is Mike still with us? Yep, there he is. Do, do we have any, um, current or updated information, maybe, uh, budget-wise? I know we were talking about property taxes being paid by the end of April. Have we heard anything from the county? And have you, uh, you know, give us a little bit on our current financial outlook? And maybe have you done any new projections or anything? Or where are we at since last week?
Well, I think the best thing I can tell you where we're at is there will be on the, um, council agenda next week, the first quarter budget presentation, um, for, you know, because it's my time anyway. And then also some additional projections, because by then I expect to be able to touch base with the county treasurer. We've had some preliminary conversations. They're still processing, uh, some of those, uh, lag checks, because the first was, uh, Friday. And so they're just getting back and the mail's being gone through. But, uh, they're, they're looking fairly optimistically at our, uh, property taxes. They just couldn't really zero into a number to me as tight as I wanted to. I also asked them if they could, uh, provide me with a, uh, not a list, but a quantity and the dollars tied to if anybody in the city of Pullman took advantage of the, uh, opportunity to defer the property taxes and go on to a payment plan. And that I did get, there was 14, uh, different properties and I'm about $186,000, where the worst of those was going to be paid over nine equal months of payments. So that means we should be seeing most of our property tax this year on those particular properties. But yeah, I expect to be able to do a full report next week with the new projections based on those property taxes. But things are not looking as dire as originally thought, but still not quite there from what I told them. I'm hearing somewhere between 41 and 45% collection rate. That's, that's for the year and that.
And then our, our, our budget money and, uh, that type of thing, we knew that we had some, uh, already money we were going to have to take from reserves. Are we looking at tapping further into the reserves or what's your, what's your thought on that at this point?
I'm, I'm worried about that resurgence and what I'm going to recommend to council today. And as the days go by, I may soften office position is maintaining that two-month reserve going into the fall in case there is a resurgence. That way, we don't have to make such hard drastic turns later. We could certainly go deeper if the council so chooses at this point. But it, that just means if something happens in November or December, we're going to have to move quickly and go very, very fast, because those dollars won't hold up very long.
Okay. Well, as you guys can all tell from the meeting tonight, I'm extremely concerned about expenditures, income and the budget. So I think that needs to be at the forefront of everything that we're doing. Thank you. Thanks. I'll be back next week with full report.
Uh, we're actually hoping that Mike actually can get some sleep once in a while, because he's been worried about this, the whole thing. And Adam, you could, you could come on here, because we have a number of city employees right now who are already furloughed. And, uh, we've also, some people that are working in, in different areas that, uh, are taking maybe a voluntary furlough. What, Adam?
Sure. So thank you, Mayor. As we've had departments that have been, uh, closed down and, and having decreased operations, library and recreation, for example, their, their staffs have been, have drastically limited in how many people are, are working. And then, uh, we've worked with our non-represented employees to, uh, have them come, have conversations with our HR department about some of their options as they, um, uh, are able to, to talk about voluntary furloughs. Especially right now, the conversation's been focused on the summer months to, um, try and again, have some, some resolution to, to budget issues that we're, we're certainly going to face. Mike and myself have, have, I, I think every day we spend on, on the budget and it's, it's definitely going to reach all parts of the, um, of the city. We're trying to mitigate as best we can. Departments have really stepped up to identify areas where it's not necessary to spend on, on certain things right now. And we certainly appreciate that. And where they've cut as much as they can, then, then the conversation goes to, um, some of the, the, the potential furloughs. Uh, my, my guess is that, from what I'm hearing from other cities, is that most cities are planning on budgeting for 2021 similarly, similarly to, what our budget is at, at this moment, severely cut back, um, not looking to, uh, spend on anything that's really extravagant, really just going for, for basic operations. And a, a good portion of that's because there's such a lag between the, uh, the revenue data and the expenditures. So really, it is better to be safe than, than sorry. But we're, we're very attuned to the fact that we're talking about, uh, our employees and we're talking about people here. So, um, it's, it's been no, no easy decisions that we've had, but we, we do think that they're, they're necessary and, uh, appreciate everyone's support as we're going through these difficult times.
So just I want to make sure the council members were aware of all the kinds of conversations that are going on daily. We've had a, just a number of meetings, we're going through all that. So that's the kind of process that, uh, your city staff has been doing on a daily basis. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. Any other comments before we have, yes, Al?
Just to continue on here, I'm, I'm assuming that you're then talking to department heads and, and, uh, working with them on if you're having to furlough or, uh, put somebody off, that the, the, the professionals of their department are able to help you with who they can kind of you, need and who they, you know, you know, saying, getting, getting help from them in regards to direction on who we're doing this with, not just from administration doing it, but the actual department heads involved with the decision.
Yep, from early on, we've had several conversations about who are essential personnel and then who are critical personnel. And, um, absolutely, we're, we're not unilaterally making decisions, but, uh, we are expecting, uh, departments to, uh, participate at, at all levels and in these, these conversations. So, um, we haven't had to go to that, that route yet. We're, we're keeping essential functions going, but, um, so far, so, so good, I guess.
Yeah, just as you said, you know, these are, these are people and we've got to take care of our people.
Yeah, I can remember back in 2008, one of the things the council said at that time, let's not create more problems by laying people off, was trying to keep our city employees going. And we certainly did at that time. That was, those are some tough decisions back then, but this is far tougher than 2008. There's no question about it, because we don't have the businesses going, we don't have the students here, we don't have, uh, still parts of that economy that was working back in 2008 right now. So with that, any, see nothing further, do I hear, uh, Pat?
I just, I just have one question and it, it really should have been part of the COVID-19 discussion. But my question is, and I'm not sure if Chief Jenkins or you, um, Mr. Mayor would, could answer this. Are we expecting any kind of an influx this weekend, given the fact that this would have been the end of the school year and people coming in to pick up, clean up rooms, pick up personal belongings? Are we expecting anything like that this weekend or next week?
I'll go to Jenkins. Chief Jenkins?
Yes, uh, council member Wright, uh, Washington State University has developed a plan to have students set up appointments to come in in two-hour increments between, uh, May 5th and May 31st to come in. And, um, if they need to come in and, and pick up their belongings to return to their hometown. So they are definitely spreading it out. So we're not really expecting a, a big influx at one time, just a little bit over, over the month.
Okay, so all right. Okay, with that, do I hear a, a motion to adjourn?
So.
Okay, I want to make sure that Dee got that. You have the motion and who, who made the second, Dee?
Sorry, one more, one more thing, one more thing.
Yeah, you don't even have the lights on, huh? Nathan, you're pretty dark over there.
I know, I'm pretty dark.
Okay.
Uh, I just want to make sure everybody stays, you know, healthy mentally, uh, physically. This is, this is huge right now. So, um, just wanted to put, put that out there. All right.
Okay, very good. We've had a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we meet next week.
Thank you. Thank you all.